All right, good evening. I'd like to call the September 8, 2025 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly. We're presiding over tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Robinson for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mayor, thank you very much. I hope you'll join me in prayer. Father, thank you for this wonderful day, this beautiful day. Thank you for all the gifts you have bestowed upon us. Father, we ask that you would enter into these chambers and give each of us the wisdom and discernment that we need to have to make the appropriate decision that will serve not just one, but all of our citizens in the city of Greenville. Father, we ask that you bless those who are less fortunate than we are and that you lift them up in your prayers, and we lift you up in their prayers. Lord, we also ask you to be especially cognizant of the family up in Charlotte. The young lady, he was just recently killed and left, especially lift her family in those up in our prayers. Lord, we ask that you can you bless everybody that comes before you, and thank you so much for everything you do every day. In your precious name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor President Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Scully.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Mayor Connolly of the four.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Mr. Manager, any ready-made changes?
Have your changes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Willis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right, we'll move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be subject of public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who did register with the city clerk will speak to speak, will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who do not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Yes, sir. First registered speaker is Mr. Jerry McRoy. Mr. McRoy, you have 30 minutes to address the mayor and council.
Don't start my time yet. Okay. Good evening, councilmembers.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. I've come to talk to you tonight about representing the city of Greenville. As a duly elected councilmember, I would think you should strive to represent your city well, to always put the city in a good light, and to promote our city as a destination worth visiting. In light of that, let's talk about that big, beautiful American flag at Camping World. Your decision to pursue legal action against Camping World is the reason I am here tonight. I believe that two of you made the right decision in this case. I also believe that four of you made the wrong decision. The two councilmembers whose decision I support are from different political parties, different ethnic groups, different genders, and represent different districts, and yet they both arrived at the same conclusion on this matter. I'm guessing their decision was based on community feedback, wisdom, experience, and doing the right thing. I would like to publicly applaud the decision of these two councilmembers. As for the other four, as a city of Greenville taxpayer, I am not only disappointed, but actually disgusted that you would squander our tax dollars to pursue such a terrible decision. Apparently, my tax dollars mean much more to me than they do to you. The big, beautiful American flag displayed at Camping World is the most unifying symbol in the whole city of Greenville. If you have not done so, I invite you to go by Camping World on a clear evening and notice that big, beautiful American flag flapping gently in the breeze, in the well-lighted setting in which it is so appropriately displayed. If you're not moved by this display, and proud to live in the greatest free nation on earth, I think you should proceed to the nearest medical facility and have them check you for a pulse. The four of you could have pursued a better path. I'll concede that Camping World violated our city ordinances, but you should also admit that city ordinances are broken every single day the sun rises. But perhaps you saw an opportunity to make a political name for yourselves. Congratulations, you succeeded. And if you do not change course on this issue very soon, I hope each of you suffers a stinging political defeat in November for the overall good of our community. Please remember my words here tonight. Each time you recite the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag when you're in council chambers, please remember them each time you drive by Camping World, which I've done several times today. As a courtesy, I will be pleased to email these comments to Valerie to give you a copy for your reference. Good evening. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. McRoy.
Thanks, Mr. McRoy.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Yes. Next speaker is Ms. Marion Swinker. Ms. Swinker, you have 3 minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Marion Swinker. I'm 3874 Dunhagen Road in Greenville. I'm a retired physician specializing in occupational and environmental medicine and a member of the Sierra Club. And I'm here tonight to speak in support of the Uniform Development Code that will soon come across your desks in the next month or so, and in particular, the sections that deal with trees and other vegetation in the city. My colleagues here will speak on the environmental benefits of trees and the health benefits of trees. I want to comment on the economic benefits of trees. To some extent, the UDO does address this as far as providing incentives for developers to retain existing trees and avoid having to plant trees back later, which would of course be smaller trees, less beneficial to the environment, just due to size. Also, there are other sections where there can be cost savings by actually retaining the trees and vegetation. And of interest to me, and possibly to you, there was an article in 2004 about the value of urban trees. It comes out of Toronto where they lost 800,000 trees to the Emerald Ash Borer, so they could do before and after, or compare this street to that street. And what they found is that property values dropped proportionately to the percentage of trees lost. So if you lose 10% of your trees, property values go down 10%. There were significant benefits as far as savings on utility bills. Houses oriented toward the south had a 14% decrease in energy consumption during heat waves if they had trees, and the people who lost their trees lost that benefit. In addition, even during wintertime, there can be benefits due to wind barriers that trees create, and the neighborhoods with more trees had about 5% less utility costs due to this barrier effect. And so these authors at least concluded that the monetary value of energy savings from urban trees exceeds their annual maintenance costs. And this is just one piece of evidence that supports my encouragement as far as the contents of that UDO and the section on trees and vegetation. Thank you for the opportunity to share this information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Swinker.
Thank you, Dr. Swinker.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Next is Lisa Mag. Ms. Maggie, you have 3 minutes to address the mayor and council. Was that all right?
Hi, I'm Lisa Mog.
Mog.
Mog, it's okay. I live at 101 Wendermere Court, and I'm here as a member of the Sierra Club, and I'm here to talk about strengthening Greenville's commitment to trees. And you probably know about the environmental benefits of trees, but I retired from ECU's Department of Psychology last year, so I wanted to look up the research on the psychological benefits of trees. And there was quite a bit, so I can only share a few highlights with you. To start, in Portland, Oregon, a nonprofit called Friends of Trees planted more than 39,000 trees, excuse me, 49,000 trees, over a period of 30 years. And they had so many tree planting records, they could compare this data to information about Portland citizens in those neighborhoods. They found that increases in trees were associated with decreases in mortality. In fact, there were lower rates of death from cardiovascular disease in neighborhoods that had extra trees planted. They estimated that for every 100 trees planted, there was one fewer premature death. And planting a tree is cheap compared to the value of a human life. Overall, they estimated that the value of lives saved outweighed the cost of planting trees by a factor of more than 1,000. As another example, in urban California areas, the tree canopy was measured and compared to data from a statewide health survey. They found in areas with more tree cover, there was better overall health, lower rates of obesity, and higher levels of social cohesion. In London, a study of street tree density found higher street tree density was related to lower rates of prescriptions for antidepressants. In the state of Wisconsin, people living with more tree cover had lower rates of depression, anxiety, and stress. And in Baltimore, a study looked at social capital, which is a measure of the connections people feel with their neighbors and their neighborhood. And again, where there were more trees, there were higher rates of social capital. So they recommended planting trees as an inexpensive way of strengthening community ties. And back to Portland, Oregon, one of the main goals of the tree planting program was to reduce stormwater runoff, but there are other benefits, including a reduction in crime. For every 100 trees planted in a neighborhood, there were 24 fewer violent crimes in the following year. Neighborhoods with lower median incomes had greater reductions in crime. So I encourage you to adopt the EAC recommendations, and I'll be glad to share, sorry, share my references or more information with anyone who's interested. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Okay. Next, we have Amanda. Amanda, you have 3 minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Amanda Mura, and I am here tonight as a Greenville resident, as well as a board member of the nonprofit organization Friends of Greenville Greenways. And I would like to request that you please adopt a comprehensive tree ordinance to protect our precious trees and expand our tree canopy. I understand there is a Unified Development Ordinance, or UDO, in draft form, and that it will be voted on soon. And I ask that all of you please review and support much of what is presented in that document. Ideas such as mandating tree replacements, having an urban forestry professional on staff, and educating developers of cost savings when they do not clear lots just makes sense and is beyond logical. Realizing that you are all extremely busy and receive copious amounts of emails and documents for your review, I would like to point out that Section 5 of the UDO is of the utmost importance. If you only have time to read a portion of the UDO, please make sure Section 5 is what you read. I returned to Greenville three years ago, and while I was very impressed with the developments after 15 years away, I still see all the work that needs to be done to expand our parks and make Greenville truly green. Other states and cities value green spaces because of how it can improve the lives of an entire community. Please take the time to read Section 5 of the draft UDO, and please consider the points presented as you move forward with planning our city's future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Yes, sir. Next, we have Jeff Monaco. He has 3 minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jeff Monaco. I'm chair of the Cypress Group of the North Carolina Sierra Club. The Cypress Group represents about 1,000 Sierra Club members and supporters in northeastern North Carolina, and about 90 or so of them in Greenville. I'm here tonight to talk about trees in Greenville, I guess that's no surprise, but in support, in particular in support of the recent recommendations from the Environmental Advisory Commission, which you heard about a few minutes ago. What I'm here to say is, what I'm here to say will probably not be surprising, that as Sierra Club members love trees in their neighborhoods. And as you've heard, there's many, many benefits. I want to point out one thing, and that is, when you talk about trees, it's also about the overstory trees, the tall trees like oaks, maples, beeches, and sycamores, and not the smaller trees such as crepe myrtles, leland cypress, and Bradford pears. We need the taller trees. The difference between the two is that the overstory trees tend to grow taller than houses and provide significant greenery and shade compared to the lower trees, which are more ornamental than doing anything beneficial. Overstory trees provide huge benefits, such as cooler neighborhoods, less water evaporation from the ground, more interception of heavy rains, and creation of homes for wildlife. These are some of the things you've just heard over the last few minutes. Now, many homeowners and land developers do not understand the benefit of planting these trees, and this is where the UDO comes in. The city council has the power to incentivize people to plant overstory trees, creating a benefit for the entire community and each of the individual homeowners. So that's where this group can come in and help out with the whole community by helping people that don't quite understand the benefit of the trees to get them a little push to add trees to their, to their communities. Now, I've lived here for over 20 years, and I moved from an area that had many, many trees. And I remember one of the first experiences here was looking for a new house with my wife, and we were outside, it was an August day, and we were out in a driveway with the sun beating down, and we felt ourselves, our skin getting hotter, our bodies getting hotter because of the sun. It was an unwanted feeling for us, and a healthy overstory of trees would have reduced that unpleasant sensation. And for someone who grew up in a cooler climate, it was, it was quite an introduction to eastern North Carolina. So the Sierra Club urges the city council, the mayor, and the city manager to, at a high priority, work on ways to get more overstory trees into the neighborhoods, especially the newly annexed farmland being turned into housing developments where there probably are no trees, and in the many parking lots that seem to be springing up everywhere. You don't need a parking lot to be a barren area. There are ways to get trees into parking lots. So I urge you, please work to ensure growth in Greenville is not at the expense of beautiful overstory trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Monaco.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Next speaker is Jackie Cannon. He has 3 minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening.
My name is Jackie Cannon, and this is my sidekick, my husband.
Another sidekick.
51 years Samuel Cannon. And we're here, first of all, we would like, like to thank you, mayor, and the city council for designating September as Sickle Cell Awareness Month. We thank you for the proclamation because sickle cell disease is very passionate to our heart, because our son, Ramon, passed away in September, in November 26 of 2021. He was 44 years old. But my husband and I continue the legacy of sickle cell disease. So on September 20th, at Mois Chapel Church on Highway 264 in Farnvia, North Carolina, we are having a blood drive in memory of Ramon to continue his legacy. As I said, it is very passionate to our heart. Blood donation is very critical for African-Americans. So my husband and I are still carrying on the legacy and fighting and going on because the National Sickle Cell Convention is, their theme is empowerment, forging ahead with strength and courage. And that is what we are continuing to do today. We're going to carry on his legacy.
We just want to say thank you, mayor, the city council, on behalf of me and my wife. We look at y'all on TV every time we get a chance. And mayor, though we are neighbors, I really want to say about this sickle cell drive of the blood transfusion. You'd be surprised how many people need blood transfusion and don't have the time to get it. Or type O, type B, and type A blood, that's very, very small that we have in the community, people. People, please, if you have a chance, please give blood, because you can be saving someone else's life.
And we speak very passionately to the African-American community because of the fact, we want them to know the seriousness of blood donation. And that's why we have partnered with the American Red Cross, as well as the Pitt County NAACP. And we will continue on this legacy of doing what we can on behalf of sickle cell disease.
We just want to thank y'all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
I feel like maybe that was the next speaker, Mr. Samuel Cannon.
Yeah, I like it.
She did it wrong. Well, it looked like I had to say what I had to say a while ago, but she did it wrong. She should have put both our names on the same piece of paper.
I blame them all.
Hey, they've been married 51 years.
Yeah, I'm about to trade in for a Cadillac.
Oh, no.
But the model has not been made yet, so I'm gonna keep it. But like I said, I just want to thank the city council, the mayor, because y'all do do a good job. I will be voting again.
Is that a wink at you?
And, and I'm still trying to find out who my city council is. And I live in 301 Kennerworth Road, and.
Hey.
I'll be seeing you.
We're gonna be talking. We're gonna be talking.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone else signed up to speak?
No, sir, we do not have any.
All right, anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have 3 minutes. Seen none? Close the public comment period?
Yes. Dr. Mog, you had offered some of your statistics to us and some information, and also Dr. Swinker. All of, that was really good information, so I'd love to have, if you can email me, some of the numbers that you presented. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, mayor. Item number 1, resolution approving lease agreements for hazard mitigation grant program properties. Item number 2, resolution accepting dedication of right-of-ways and easements for Augusta Trails, Section 4, Phase 2A and 2B. Item number 3, resolution accepting dedication of right-of-ways and easements for Brook Hollow, Phase 1A. Item number 4, resolution indeed of release for abandonment of 1, a 20-foot wide sanitary sewer easement across tax parcel number 09071 and 53862, number 2, a 10-foot wide water easement across tax parcel number 09071 and 53862. And number 3, a 25-foot wide electric and sanitary sewer easement across tax parcel number 09071 in the Green subdivision, Section 1. Item number 5, resolution indeed of release for abandonment of a portion of a 10-foot wide electric easement across tax parcel number 85672 in the Green subdivision, Section 1. Item number 6, ordinance and reimbursement resolution amending Greenville Utility Commission's capital project budget for HVAC upgrades. Item number 7, resolution approving an exchange of property with Evans Street Properties LLC. Item number 8, resolution adopting the Neuse River Basin Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Item number 9, resolution approving an interlocal agreement with Pitt County for animal shelter services. Item number 10, resolution authorizing an interlocal agreement with Pitt County for compactor collection from various apartment complexes within the city of Greenville. Item number 11, resolution authorizing the filing of applications to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security for FEMA Tropical Storm Helene Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, BR-4827-NC, for various stormwater projects. Item number 12, request by police department to utilize asset forfeiture funds to purchase equipment. Item number 13, request to purchase one new additional trolley for the city of Greenville Public Works Department, Fleet Division. Item number 14, resolution designating the Director of Engineering, City Engineer, as the authorized representative to execute and submit environmental permit applications to federal and state agencies for capital improvement projects. Item number 15, approval of the proposed 2025, 2020, 2026 schedule of city council meetings. Item number 16, budget schedule for fiscal year 2026, 2027. Item number 17, various tax refunds greater than $100. And item number 18, resolution declaring four vehicles as surplus and authorization to purchase four replacement vehicles and four additional vehicles for the Public Works Sanitation Division. Please do not take them all off of consent, gentlemen.
Somebody get that man some water.
Well, you haven't seen number 20 yet. That's all we have on consent.
I hope we get to it quick.
Yeah.
Councilmember Blackburn.
So there's what, 18 items?
Come on, Mel.
I mean, really, come on. No, I would, seriously, I would like to pull item number 9 and item number 15, and, thank you.
I make a motion to approve items 1 through 18, except 9 and 15.
Second.
All right. All motions have been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
I would have probably lost that bet if I would have taken it. I was expecting at least four.
About 18, I know, really.
At least four.
I was thinking 6.
Proud of you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Number 9.
Item number 9, resolution approving an interlocal agreement with Pitt County for animal shelter services. Now I call forward our chief of police, Richard Tindall, for a brief discussion.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is a renewal of a contract that we had in place previously. It provides us 10 large pens and 10 small pens, large being primarily for dogs, small being primarily for cats, $4,000 a month, $200 per cage, over the course of a year. We've made some minor changes to it. That's why it's here, primarily in terms of how long it goes for, year to year.
And to me, what is so, to me, what is, I guess, the most important element of this is, first of all, that we have this agreement with the county. They have a really good operation over there. And then, Chief, if you don't, if you don't mind, maybe talk a little bit about why, kind of the nature of this relationship. It's not that, I just want to take the opportunity to commend our animal protective services and our, under our, the leadership of our chief, for having such a progressive, modern approach to animal welfare. And Chief, can you talk a little bit about how you actually use this agreement with the shelter?
Yeah. First, I would say that our APS folks do a fantastic job with the job, with the tasks that they're given. You know, sometimes it's hard doing what they do, to be honest with you. One of the, one of the most important things, I think, to pull out of this is, and it's, it's difficult to say this, it's gonna come out wrong, just forgive me for it. The Pitt County Animal Shelter really is our last resort. We have a fantastic working relationship with them. They have a very professional place running over there. But what we and the APS officers do generally is they want to put the animals somewhere other than the shelter. So they're looking for the, the rescue places. You know, the Humane Society is, is probably the easiest example, to make sure that they're getting these animals that we know can be adopted, that have a chance to be adopted somewhere. They go to these rescues so that, so that they can be adopted. We use the, the animal shelter in cases where we don't think that that's going to be a successful adoption, or we don't have any other choice. A lot of times, some of the rescues are filled up themselves. So the, the animal shelter. So the animal shelter really is a last resort for us. They work diligently to make sure they reach, I can give you a list of places they call to make sure they're doing everything that they can when they're able to, to make sure that we give them some other option than the animal shelter.
And that's really just such a cultural shift that has been done within the department, with the initiative of the officers and the chiefs that we've had over years. I believe it began under Chief Aiden, when we renamed the division Animal Protective Services. And I think there's just been a continual change in the way that animals and animal, what used to be called old animal control, has shifted. And I just really applaud our officers for that. I know that you not only look for alternative places if you have strays, that you also try to follow through, and sometimes you're even involved in finding them homes. I've personally experienced that with a dog that was found running around, and actually because of your picking the dog up, the dog found another home. And I also know that there is concern in our community about cats, and hopefully we're going to be able to work on. Our low-cost spay-neuter clinic has, for the time being, been shuttered. We hope that it gets back up and running, and also want to think about ways that we can address the cat issue. People love cats and people feed cats, but they don't always get those cats sterilized. So that's kind of the next chapter with animals. But thank you very much, Chief, for talking about that agreement. And with that, I would make a motion to approve.
All right, motion made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, six zero.
All right, we'll move on to item fifteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number fifteen, approval of the proposed two thousand twenty-six schedule of city council meetings. Turn it over to our city clerk, Valerie Shewer-Carp.
Here for any questions.
I just wanted to put it to the council, doesn't have to be a long, drawn-out discussion, but I know that in years past, we used the third Monday meeting as our workshop. And since I've been back on council, we meet at four to have our workshop. It can make a bit of a squeeze when you're working your, you know, at your job during the day to try to get wrapped up and get here at four. I know a lot of us are kind of working against the clock on that. And I just wanted to see if there was any interest amongst my peers to use, instead of doing our workshops at four o'clock before our six PM first Monday meeting, to actually use that third Monday meeting for our workshop. It would just free up our schedules a little bit for that first Monday meeting.
I like the workshops. I enjoy it. I mean, I feel like it's very informative, and I think it's kind of...
We should have gone and eliminated it. Oh, yeah, no, I like, yeah, I like the workshops. I'm just saying, do them on that third Monday meeting, instead of, instead of stacking up the workshop on top of our council meeting at six. Because like today, we had a full slate of items to discuss at our workshop, and we had to kind of wrap them up so we could get here. You just have a little bit more flexibility if you do it at that, take that third Monday to have the workshop, instead of doing it before the council meeting. Again, I just wanted to put it before my peers and see if there was any interest in that, any taste for that.
I do like having the workshop before the council meeting. We're already here, we come on over. I know that, like you said, Councilmember Blackburn, we were pressed for time today. I think that our city manager is very strategic in trying to, you know, map out what he brings before us and things that we talk about. And I think that it's just, it's a lot of information, it's a lot of things going on in our city. And so either way you slice it, it will be a lot. But I do like having the meetings before our regularly scheduled council meeting, and then having that third Monday kind of usually.
Well, I think it gives, and I think it gives the staff some more flexibility in case there's a larger agenda than we need at third.
And I don't want council to think that today's discussion, even though it was lengthy, was indicative of what the workshops typically are. The workshops typically are not that detailed, and we usually have time left over, significant, I mean, thirty minutes or more left over. It just happened to be this month, we had a series of items that we needed to discuss. And ultimately, those items did not have to be resolved this month. They are, they're, they're part of a more comprehensive discussion that could go two or three months. The items that were discussed today, we just want to get them right. That's the most important thing, they're not time-sensitive, per se. So I don't want council to think that just because tonight's was a long meeting...
No, we don't.
Does not, is not indicative of all.
Right, and I'd like to add, as I stated before at the workshop, I do believe that our city manager is making every effort to make our workshops as efficient as possible by providing the opportunity for the council briefings. And I understand that everyone may not be able to attend those, but that information, having it beforehand and being abreast of the issues is helpful so that the workshops are just kind of like an additive to that. And if you have additional questions and whatnot, they can be teased out. But we've had the opportunity to be well aware of what's for us.
And like I say, my interest is that with a workday where you're at your office and you're trying to, especially on a Monday, and you're trying to get through your workday, and then you have to kind of pack up everything early and come to a workshop, sometimes for me, it just gets a little bit hectic for that day. But if nobody else is, has an interest in changing it, then...
Absolutely, I'm fine with it as it is. And we'll make a motion to approve.
All right, motion made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, six zero.
Move on to new business. Item number nineteen.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Item number nineteen, lease agreement with East Carolina University for use of the North Recreation Complex. I'll now call forward our Executive Director of Recreation and Parks and Capital Projects, Don Octagon, for the presentation.
All right, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm pretty sure he's doing all right. So tonight, we're going to present a lease agreement with East Carolina University for use of North Recreation Complex. And before I get started, I do want to recognize Stephanie Coleman, who's in the audience tonight. She's the Vice Chancellor of Administration of Finance with East Carolina University. She's been very instrumental in helping us get to where we are now. So thank you, Stephanie, for being here. And also, before we get started to the details of the lease, I do want to start out by just kind of talking about where, how we got to where we are today. It's been about a two-year process. August of two thousand twenty-three, Victus Advisors was hired by the city of Greenville and Play Greenville NC Sports to conduct a feasibility study for potential sports complex due to an increased sports tourism demand for the Greenville-Pitt County community. In January two thousand twenty-four, Victus reported that a sports complex could bring significant economic and residential benefits to the city, the county, and residents north of the Tar River. Their initial recommendation was for a twelve diamond complex suitable for baseball and softball. In that January two thousand twenty meeting, Victus provided other financial details as well. At the planning retreat in January two thousand twenty-four, council directed staff and Victus to analyze and impact adding four additional rectangle fields to that initial twelve diamond sports complex. Victus then came back in April two thousand twenty-four, provided an update to that, and showed that adding four additional rectangle fields had very little economic impact to the community. At the same meeting, council directed staff to assemble a sports complex task force to create proposed next steps for city council to consider, which has helped us get to where we are today. The next slide shows the task force. The task force included representation from all city council districts, staff from East Carolina University, staff from ECU Health, East Carolina University Campus Bonus and Recreation. Included representation from local sports organizations that you see on the screen. Also included, many members of our business community, which are also listed. Included city staff, Convention and Visiting Bureau staff, staff from Pitt County, so the school system, and also Greenville-Pitt County Sports Commission. Goals of the sports task committee was to talk about the configuration and usage, site location, amenities that would go into a state complex, and also develop a plan to present to council. Which, at their January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting, the sports complex task force members voted unanimously to adopt a plan for city staff to recommend a city council, which we did in the January two thousand twenty-five planning session. That plan included a phased approach, as you see here. Step one included open discussions with East Carolina University about joint use agreement for the ECU North Recreational Complex, including potential improvements. Step two was to continue researching properties for a new sports complex to host a softball tournament, a diamond field complex. And step three, upon successful negotiations with ECU, move forward with designing facility enhancements to host a variety of sports tournaments there at North Recreation Complex, which is, I'm not going into the detail of that, but is an eight rectangle complex. Also to note, on August seventh, ECU Board of Trustees approved ECU the ability to move forward with negotiations with the city of Greenville, which when we started conversations with Ms. Coleman, to talk about the leasing. Now, before we get into the details of the lease, just want to remind this council overview of ECU's North Recreation Complex. It's a one hundred and twenty-eight acre complex located on Highway two sixty-four, includes eight rectangle natural grass fields, all with lights. That include, that can house sports, soccer, lacrosse, tackle football, and flag football. Other amenities include, has a maintenance facility on site with office space for personnel. It's a field house with restrooms, eighteen-hole disc golf course, sand volleyball court, six-acre lake for fishing and kayaking. And as I mentioned, potential for expansion of additional recreation amenities, parking to accommodate large tournaments and potential future trails. So now, before we go on to the presentation, I'd like to invite Andrew Smith, President and CEO of Visit Greenville NC, to talk about the potential sports tourism impacts of this complex.
Thank you, Don. Good evening, council. Hope everybody's doing well tonight. Just want to take about five minutes just to talk about some of the advantages of a complex like this that would have for our sports tourism program here in Greenville. The first thing really is additional fields will allow Play Greenville NC Sports, and that's how we're branded as a sports commission, is Play Greenville NC Sports, to expand the types of tournaments that we can host here in Greenville. So I've got a couple examples on the screen for you. One is flag football. Flag football is one of the fastest-growing sports, both youth and adult amateur, and especially women's flag football is growing extremely fast. We've had one flag football tournament here, we've had several that would like to be here, we just haven't had the field capacity to accommodate them. Lacrosse is also something that is growing in Greenville, but specifically for us, in this case, we have some lacrosse planners from the mid-Atlantic and lower northeastern states that have approached us that would like to have their late winter and early spring tournaments here. It's much easier for us to have those tournaments because our weather is much better in late February and early March than it is up in the northeast. We've also had some tournaments here that we've had to let go because we haven't been able to grow with the tournament size. So we've had some USA Rugby events here, we've had some North Carolina Youth Soccer Association events here. They were excellent, but as they grew, they outgrew what we could provide. And there's some other sports that we have been approached with that we've just had to say no because of a lack of field capacity. That includes field hockey, ultimate frisbee, kickball, and quidditch. Additional fields will also allow Play Greenville NC Sports to expand tournaments that are currently hosted here. This example is Beast of the East Soccer Tournament. I use this example because I think people are pretty familiar with this one. Happens every year here late in January. The last tournament that was here, we had exactly a hundred teams, seventeen local teams, and eighty-three out-of-town teams. You can see it, it certainly generated some, some good economic impact, but we did turn teams away because we didn't have the field capacity. So some of the tournaments that we have, we want to be able to grow. We know that sports tourism will help grow the city's hospitality amenities and infrastructure on the north side of the river. That's important for us as a CVB. We see more hotels being built and more restaurants and retail and entertainment options. I want to give you an example of the Ting Park Sports Complex, that's in Holly Springs, North Carolina, which is about twenty-two miles south of Raleigh, a town of about twenty-one thousand people, and it is growing. But just recently, I think they're in their fourth, the fifth year of operation, now they've got entertainment options around that sports complex, two new hotels, restaurants, and retail. So there'll be some good growth with the sports complex when we have athletes coming in and out each weekend. And I think that's really important, too, just for the residents north of the river, too, to give them access, a little bit closer access to some of those amenities. We always want to talk about the economic impact that sports tourism brings, but there's some other benefits as well. Destination awareness is really important, bringing people here for the first time, raising our destination profile in sports. The more different types of sports that you can have in a community, that raises your profile within the sports tourism world. Job creation, retention, and supporting our small businesses, all are going to be things that will be happening when we have a sports complex. All those things will increase. And then the last thing, and the really most important thing that I wanted to point out, too, from a marketing perspective, is that we're not starting from scratch here. We have a sports commission. Our sports commission is very aggressive, we travel to numerous trade shows and events. We've got two staff members in Columbia, South Carolina, right now, at a sports relationship conference, meeting with sports tournament organizers. So we have an established sports commission that can start marketing right away. We have extensive services that our office offers to tournament planners to make sure that they have a good experience while they're here and have them rebook. And then, maybe, I'm a little biased, but I think our sports commission is very well-respected by our peers in the industry and other sports tournament planners. So we've got a good reputation to build on. So we're excited about the possibility, we're excited about working with city staff, and our staff working together to both promote the fields, but also to have that consistent message. So I'm happy to take, you know, questions at the end, once Don finishes it up. So Don, call you back up.
Hey, Andrew, I want to tell you something.
Yes, sir.
I timed you, it was exactly five minutes.
There you go.
You said, you said, "I just want to take five minutes of your time," and you started at six fifty-four, and it's six fifty-nine?
Thank you.
Hey, that's pretty good right there.
I'll take it.
How many minutes you got? Give me a second.
I'll shoot for it. All right, so thanks, Andrew. So not only does sports, there's not only sports tourism benefits to ECU's North Recreation Complex, but also community benefits. As you see here, it increases accessibility to various recreational opportunities and programs for residents, and allows, allows practice for various of our local sports organizations, plus helps us expand also our Greenville Recreation and Parks programming, and also creates a potential, as Andrew said, for other, other economic development opportunities, which positively impact the quality of life for residents. So now we'll kind of get into the details of the lease. So the proposed lease agreement provides the city with the following opportunities: establish the rectangle field sports complex with eight fields for further use, ability for local teams to have access to the field for games and practices Monday through Thursday. There's also the city's exclusive use of the complex to offer tournaments Fridays through Sunday with other weekday use, with other weekdays for occasional larger tournaments that may take more than those three days. The term, the lease, would be valid for a period of fifty years with a single option to renew for up to forty-nine more years, additional years. The total term, including renewals, will not exceed ninety-nine years. After the agreement is finalized, the transition period will begin and last until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. At the end of the transition period, the city would have exclusive use of the facility, including clubhouse, restrooms, disc golf course, and other amenities. The city at that time also would, would be responsible for managing, operating, and maintaining the grounds. Property improvements, with approval from the state of North Carolina, the city could make various improvements to the complex, including additional parking, field enhancements, and other outdoor recreational opportunities. And then naming rights, also, the city would have exclusive right to name properties, facilities, or amenities after the transition period. Next slide outlines the lease financial terms. Initial cash outlay payment is defined by the terms, is, the contract is three million dollars. Annual payments, year one through ten is three hundred thousand dollars per year, year eleven through twenty is two hundred fifty thousand, and years twenty-one through fifty is one fifty. There at the bottom is a total cash outlay plus the lease together for a total of thirteen million dollars total over, over the course of the entire lease, three fifty years. Lease funding sources for the initial outlay is general funding, capital reserve, CVB hotel tax capital, a million dollars for a total of three million. Supporting the note that the annual lease payments that were mentioned will be funded by revenues, tournaments, and field rentals, and other services we may provide to the department, our city, received by public and private use of the facility. This is just an overview of lease timeline. As I mentioned, January two thousand twenty-five, the sports complex that ours is board recommended, the recommendation to councilman was approved. August seventh, ECU Board of Trustees approved proposed lease terms. We're here tonight for your consideration of approval of the lease. September seventeenth, the UNC Board of Governors will consider approval of the lease. October first is the proposed effective date of the lease, which would start the fifteen-month transition period ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. And then in January, January two thousand twenty-six, city staff would come back to city council, provide an update on the transition status and operating plans for the complex. And then the staff recommendations approve the lease agreement with East Carolina University for the use of the North Recreational Complex, and authorize the city manager to negotiate, negotiate any additional terms necessary that are in the best interest of the city and are not inconsistent with the intent of this request, and execute said lease agreement and other documents. And with that, I'd be glad to take any questions.
All right, Councilmember Blackburn.
Just a couple of questions. Thank you for that presentation. What did you say the annual lease cost was going to be?
Annual lease for years one through 10 is $300,000. Years 11 through 20 is $250,000, and then years 21 through 50 is $150,000.
Okay. And, and then that initial $3 million, that's just sort of like our good faith money, our, this is, okay. My next question is, this is kind of a little bit off, perhaps off the, off the wall sounding, but why did we, this, why, why is the lease term that after 99 years, it can't be renewed? I don't know where any of us will be in 99 years, but if it's a, if it's a success, you know, I'm thinking, you know, and Greenville is still here and it's a success, would we not want to continue it? Again, who knows what anything will look like in 99 years, but.
I would say that in essence, a 99-year lease is a purchase. That because it, it does stretch so far out into the future. Clearly, both part, if it's a success, both, there will be a initiative for both parties to continue the lease. I do believe, I do believe that. I mean, that there, it's only in ECU's best interest and the city's best interest to continue that into perpetuity if it's successful.
Because it said something like in no term, under no circumstances would it be extended. I was like, well, that sounds pretty certain to me that it's just got to end.
They can deal with that.
In 99 years, okay.
That's easy.
Thank you.
And I would, I would add one thing to tack on to Don's presentation. Once council adopts this and the board of governors adopts this, we will get moved right straight into the design engineering of the expansion of the four additional fields out there so that when we do have full use of the facility, we're ready to start hosting those tournaments. Having 12 fields is going to be what separates us from everyone else in the ability to host very large tournaments that attract people from all over, not only the state, but the southeast.
And can, can you remind me the cost of those four additional fields?
To be determined. We still got to get to the design phase and.
We have set aside a, we have set aside a budget through the hotel tax to fund it with possibly $7 million to $7.5 million. But we're going to get it lower than that.
We're going to get lower than that, that's right.
I know, now I know we will, but that's done through the convention and visitors authority?
Through the hotel.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know if this is for you, Don, or Andrew, but if I remember correctly in the, in the study, because those watching on TV in the audience, you've heard some numbers, but if I remember correctly, I believe the study estimated conservatively 75,000 overnight stays additional. Is that correct? Whichever one needs to answer that question.
Yes, sir. That is correct. So they, and that was done by Victor, so 75,000 hotel rooms annually.
And I also understood that the conservative estimate for revenue spent in the community was around $40 million to $42 million a year. Is that correct likewise?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because I know these things, I know this, this is, this is one of my agenda items I came on council with to do this, and I know that, I think I just, I know I've told Don and other members, I know Florida just built a, or started tracking dirt on a $1 billion used sports complex. Up in Holly Springs, I go up there twice a month for sporting stuff, and they are in fact killing it with their complex. But anyway, thank you for all your hard work. I just wanted to clarify that so those watching would know that there's more benefit to this direct and indirect.
Yes, sir.
And you said, I think, which one, the two hotels just went to Holly Springs.
That's correct, yes.
And that's what we typically see when you see the complex built, you see hotels being built to accommodate the players and their family members and their relatives that come to see these big tournaments.
That's right.
Thank you very much for answering those questions.
And I would add to that, to put it in context, the economic benefit that we receive locally from the Little League Softball World Series, we're talking about that type of impact every single weekend that we host these large tournaments.
I'll, I'll say that this last weekend, I spent 12 hours out at Sarah Law, and I did not leave that place. And one of the things that I noted, there were 16 teams that were out there, and there are families that are bringing their kids there, grandparents there. And the one thing that I noticed was that, man, I swear, I wish I would have opened up a Chick-fil-A in Winterville because there were people with just handfuls of Chick-fil-A coming back to the park. And all I kept thinking, I was like, can you imagine like a grand scheme of things of, of the amount of people that will come for these soccer tournaments, or lacrosse tournaments, or flag football, whatever the tournament is? And they have much larger teams and more, more teams that are there. I mean, the economic impact is incredible. I mean, I didn't know, I didn't understand until I started living it, but it's, it's huge. I mean, those tournaments bring in a tremendous amount of money, and there are huge influx for our local businesses that they all go to. I mean, 12 hours, I was there for 12 hours. I felt like a lobster.
I'm owed to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels, second by Councilmember Robinson. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right. Hey, the moment we have all been waiting for, the reading of number 20.
All right. All right, item number 20. Thank you, Mayor. Item number 20. Budget ordinance amendment number two, amending the 2025-2026 City of Greenville Budget Ordinance Number 25-020. Health Fund Ordinance Number 25-020. Vehicle Replacement Fund Ordinance Number 25-020. Facility Improvement Fund Ordinance Number 25-020. Transit Fund Ordinance Number 25-020. Fleet Maintenance Fund Ordinance Number 25-020. Sanitation Fund Ordinance Number 25-020. Stormwater Management Utility Fund Ordinance Number 25-020. Engineering Capital Project Fund Ordinance Number 20-019. Donations Fund Ordinance Number 18-062. Capital Project Management Fund Ordinance Number 24-040. Occupancy Tax Fund Ordinance Number 25-020. Capital Reserve Fund Ordinance Number 25-020. And Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitor Authority Ordinance Number 25-020. I'll now call for our Chief Financial Officer, Jacob Joyner, for the presentation.
For a five-minute presentation.
If it goes long. Budget Amendment Number Two for the fiscal year 2026 budget. This is impacting the long list of funds that City Manager Mr. Cowan just read out. Main funds being the various operating funds for the city, as well as the Engineering Capital Project Fund, Capital Project Management Fund, occupancy tax fund, capital reserve, and the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitor Authority. Item A, this is recognizing incumbents carry forward for annual funds. This is an annual entry, and it's just for prior year expenses that were incurred but not yet paid. This increases the budget among pretty much all of our operating funds, largely which would be the general fund, which has a $3.9 million increase, the vehicle replacement fund at 1.8 million, the transit fund at $1.5 million increase, and sanitation at $3 million increase. Majority of costs are capital projects that were underway. Item B, appropriating fiscal year 26 capital fund for sidewalk and ADA improvements. This will increase the engineering fund by $200,000. Item C, we're recognizing donated funds for police backpack for kids. That increases our donations fund by $4,000. Item B, item D will be establishing the sports complex project. That will increase the project management fund, $14 million, and the occupancy tax fund, the capital reserve fund, and general fund by $1 million each. Then item A will be appropriating fund balance for ongoing advertising projects, and that will increase the CVA fund by $140,000. That brings the overall operating budget to $187.9 million, and we ask that council approve budget amendment number two.
Question?
No.
Yes, actually.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Would you mind, please, Mr. Joyner, going back to the sports complex fund of 14 million?
Yes.
I know we just had the presentation about the sports.
Just like that, we got 14 million bucks.
I mean, I, I don't remember hearing that particular number come up.
That is, that establishes the budget for full 50 years of the lease.
Okay, okay, okay.
Just getting it out of the way.
Okay, I was about to say, the only number I heard was 3 million.
Michael was digging around, he found 14 million bucks, just like that.
We come up with $14 million that quickly?
No, that, that is accumulation of all the years. And I will say, if we had to go out and build that, that complex today, it would cost probably double that amount. So what we're paying over 50 years is about 50% of what it would cost to build it.
I think the estimates we saw were 40 to 60 million.
Well, that included everything.
Yeah.
But that's just that component would be just that, yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Would you like to make a wonderful motion?
I will.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Scully, second by Councilmember Blackburn. Hey, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right, we'll move on to the review of the September 11th, 2025 city council agenda.
On your, on your screen for the public to view is the agenda for Thursday night. Would like to make a, one addition and one subtraction from that. On Thursday night, we'll be asking council to add an agenda item for the presentation of the 2472 staffing model for the fire rescue department, and we'll be asking council to remove item number 11, the resolution authorizing the condemnation and acquisitions of certain property for Cory Road off the agenda. We have come to a resolution on that. So we'll be making one addition and one subtraction.
Motion to add the item you want, and motion to take off the item you want to take off.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Blackburn. You good? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes 6-0. Mr. Manager? I was asked by the council to give a preview of the upcoming appointments. Would it be okay if I quickly went through those?
Absolutely.
All right. This is, these are appointments coming up on Thursday, so no need to take action tonight. But we have the Historic Preservation Commission. There's one appointment there for Councilmember Blackburn. Next, we have the Housing Authority. We are waiting to hear back from the Housing Authority on the status of the resident commissioner. Next, we have the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have two seats there, one assigned to Councilmember Scully and one assigned to Councilmember Robinson. Next, and finally, we've got the Recreation and Parks Commission, and that is one nomination needed by you, Mayor Cowan. And that will conclude the appointments for Thursday.
Thank you, Valerie.
All right. City Managers Report.
I will, I am setting my shout out to Thursday, something we all wait for.
Oh, man, I like it.
On the edge of your seat until Thursday.
All right, let me check the agenda, looks like, oh, they must have missed this one. The City Attorneys Report.
I'll follow the lead of the manager and no report, but glad to be here.
All right. How about the City Clerks Report?
Happy September, everybody. Not a lot to say on this front, but yeah, one more to go, that's it.
How about the weather?
The weather, the weather's been beautiful, it's been gorgeous.
It was blazing hot on Saturday, then it was freezing on Sunday, and then it was beautiful today.
North Carolina.
That's right.
Love it.
The weather, just wait a minute.
That's right. Let's start down this way. Councilmember Robinson.
Great, Mayor, thank you so much. First, y'all know I'm just a nonstop advocate for the sports complex, but I feel like we're making progress out there in the ordinance for ECU. Thank you so much. And I certainly, I saw Chancellor Rogers Saturday at the ballgame, I was sort of going to thank him and all the staff for doing that. It's a great step in the first direction. It's a great money maker. It's going to be a great way to drive business to our Greenville, make us truly a destination city. These things are taken off. When you're spending a billion dollars like Orlando, Florida on one, it, it tells you that we're making the right decision. So thank you so much for all that. Number two, congratulations on ECU on a big win. I mean, I, I get it, they were playing Campbell, and nothing to crack on Campbell because I went to law school there, but congratulations to ECU. And I want to say this, I wasn't able to attend the ceremony about the, the 50 and 10, but I want to say this publicly to Parker Overton, that was the genesis of that idea became Parker, and he partnered with Dr. Defar at PCC, and she's only been there, what, about a year now, I think, Michael, about a year? And that's going to be a great thing, and I know, Councilmember Foreman, you were there in that Breakfast Club meeting, and you had a chance to see the city manager's face when he was asking for 70, or suggesting 75, and somebody said about 12 times that, that you could probably get. And so I think that goes back to, to the business people and leaders in our community that are willing to invest back in the city for good things to serve our citizens. So that's going to be a monumental project, and I think, and we need to get more aggressive, like, like I said about the employees, instead of being 50 and 10, one of those members said, remember Councilmember Foreman, 100 and 10, and we can do it. And with that program, I think it won't be just a model for other cities and towns in Greenville, it's going to be a nationwide model because it is a growth program, and Dr. Defar is 100% committed behind it, and I saw the private commitment to it, we're committed to it. I think it's a great thing to make affordable housing on the west side of Greenville and elsewhere, a reality for a person to actually own a home. And I, I really believe that we can turn it from 50 into 100. And listening to that room speak and their enthusiasm, I absolutely believe when those people speak and they get committed, they will actually do it. I mean, just from Eddie Smith, from drawing one boat into a, a worldwide brand, when these people speak, they mean it, and so I'm excited about that. So I wanted to say personally, thank you to Parker Overton and those other people involved in it for, for having such a great idea and vision to do something so good for our city. I didn't leave anything else out. I guess that's it. Mayor, thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Scully?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to ditto my excitement about the sports complex. And one of the things I'm really excited about is that's going north of the river and that, that huge park complex is going to be available for our citizens to, citizens to enjoy the lake, the walking trails, the sports fields. It's really going to be a wonderful thing to activate that place. It's really beautiful out there, I'm super excited about it. Big thank you to our teachers. I've got three kids here in school, and our teachers are working their tails off right now to make sure that they are safe and learning well. So thank you so much to every teacher in our community for all that you do for our children. And I want to encourage our whole community to support our teachers, to lift them up, to buy them Starbucks gift cards, or whatever you need to do, to give them a pat on the back and let them know how much you appreciate them. It's a busy time of year for them. Congrats to our Pirates. That goes for all of our university professors, too, and staff over there in at PCC. It's a really exciting time of year. So fun to see all the families out for football weekends and enjoying the community. Just love fall in Greenville. It's really great. And I want to continue to support small businesses downtown. Fifth Street's looking really good, but Dickinson ain't looking very good. So please support small businesses, especially in the Dickinson area. It ain't that hard to get there, you just have to drive a little bit farther around to 19th, Ninth Street or around to 14th Street. It's still pretty easy to access, there's plenty of parking. We also have a downtown shuttle now that's taking people from Five Points and around the downtown area over to Dickinson so that you can have easy access if you're nervous about walking on foot through the construction area. Lots of great stuff happening over there, so please continue to support them on Dickinson and our small businesses throughout the city. They're the lifeblood of our economy and our culture. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Willis?
Thank you, Mayor. No comments tonight.
Hey. Councilmember Blackburn?
Just a quick comment from me. I would like to say thank you to CAR, Citizens Against Racism, and NOTRA, the North of the River Association for the forum that they held. It was very well organized, and it was a really good opportunity to talk about the issues and hear from members of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Foreman?
Really quick, I'll just mirror what Councilmember Robinson said about the Breakfast Club. The responsiveness of the Breakfast, Breakfast Club was what impressed me. I was invited initially there to talk about housing and how the face of homelessness has changed in our community, and their responsiveness spearheaded this initiative of 50 and 10. And it gave me confidence in the fact that when people's hearts are in the right place, they'll use their influence to make things happen, and we have what we need in our community